Alright, good afternoon, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started. We're gonna get into, uh, we're gonna get into a kind of a new theme. I never looked at it that way, but I was doing some studying. But we're gonna be in, uh, chapter twenty-one. We're gonna begin kind of the final, uh, end, I guess. But we're gonna end on a high note. That's what I like about this. So Revelation twenty-one, we're gonna begin at verse one. John writes this, he says, "Now I saw a new heaven and a new earth, for the first heaven and the first earth had passed away, and also there was no more sea. Then I, John, saw the holy city, New Jerusalem, coming down out of heaven from God, prepared as a bride adorned for her husband. And I heard a loud voice from heaven saying, 'Behold, the tabernacle of God is with men, and he will dwell with them, and they shall be his people; God himself will be with them and be their God. And God will wipe away every tear from their eyes; there shall be no more death, nor sorrow, nor crying; there shall be no more pain for the former things that passed away. And he who sat on the throne said, 'Behold, I make all things new.' And he said to me, 'Write, for these words are true and faithful.' And he said to me, 'It is done; I am the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end; I will give up the fountain of the water of life freely to him who thirsts; he who overcomes shall inherit all things, and I will be his God, and he shall be my Son. But the cowardly, unbelieving, abominable murderers, sexually immoral sorcerers, idolaters, and all liars shall have their part in the lake, which burns with fire and brimstone, which is the second death.'" And we're gonna stop there, because there's a lot to unpack. Here. Alright. So I love this right here. It says, "From the time described midway through Genesis, chapter three, until the events of Revelation twenty, earth experienced is experiencing the presence of sin and death." So I love that, because when you think about it, there's a lot of good things packed in there, but everything from Genesis three, after the fall of Adam and Eve, all has to do with what? Sin? And then reconciliation through Jesus Christ up to this point. Now, that's, that's one point. At the end of chapter twenty, John sees God delivering the final and ultimate judgment on Satan, casting all evil into the lake of fire. That's just what we finished up. So now, John says, "Now I saw," he said, "we can say that Revelation, chapter twenty-one, begins a new section of the book of Revelation." So this is what I was talking about. This is kind of neat, because I never thought about it this way, but it's true. So this writer said, first of all, you have Jesus, the Lord of the churches, right? Because chapter one is an introduction, and then two and three, what? Are the seven letters to the churches. The second thing, from four to twenty, is Jesus is the lion over the nations, right? They're putting everything right. That's, that's your seals are being broken, that's the judgments, the trumpet judgments, the bold judgments, and all these things leading up to this final battle. But now, we see Jesus, the Lamb, among believers. So all this is past, and he doesn't need to be the lion anymore, right? Because why? All that's left is people that's trusted him. So, "A new heaven," he said, "I saw a new heaven and a new earth." Now, this is very interesting, because he says, "The idea of a new earth with a new atmosphere and skies is a familiar theme in the scriptures. Many of the prophets, both Old and New Testament, spoke of this new heaven and new earth, and here they are. For behold, I create new heavens and a new earth, and the former shall not be remembered or come to mind; but be glad and rejoice forever, and rejoice forever in what I create; for behold, I create a Jerusalem as rejoicing, and her people a joy." So talking about building a new city. Isaiah prophesied. "Looking for and hastening the coming of the day of God, because of which the heavens will be dissolved, being on fire, and the elements will melt with fervent heat; nevertheless, we, according to his promise, look for a new heaven and a new earth, in which righteousness dwells." And that was Peter's writing. So, uh, this is what I, I want to read you this one. "It's worth remembering that the new heaven referred to doesn't mean the heaven where God is enthroned." So, did anybody think that? Anybody think that was the heaven they were talking about? I mean, just honestly, right? Because first time I read it, that's what I thought about. Well, he's gonna rebuild heaven. But then these writers are saying, "No, what he was referring to here is heaven, he's talking about the atmosphere we live in, right? So the ozone layer's gonna get fixed. That's a good thing, ain't it? Yes, sir!
It's really concentrating on the first sentence there. "For behold, I create new heavens and a new earth, and the former shall not be remembered or come to mind."
Yep.
That's why, if a loved one don't go to heaven, and you do, you know, you see what that says right there? "Not be remembered or come to mind," I would like to do. You're not gonna remember. You're not gonna remember. If they don't go, it's just gonna be a block in your mind. You're not gonna go. What do you think, Richard?
We're gonna talk about that tonight.
Oh, well, I didn't.
You're good. You're good. Well, we are. We're gonna talk about it. We are. So, so the Bible uses the word, no, that's good, because we're gonna get to that. The Bible uses the word heaven in three sentences, and I've read this before. The first heaven is the earth's atmosphere, the blue sky. The second heaven is outer space. And then the third heaven is the place where God lives in war. So the Bible, again, this translated, heaven means three different things to the Bible scholars. So, when the scriptures speak of a new heaven, they mean a new blue sky and a new night sky, not a heaven where God dwells, right? And I got to thinking about that, and I said, "Well, it makes perfect sense." You know why? Because he doesn't need to rebuild something that's perfect already. Yep, right? His home. So, it's just a G Wiz thing, because the reason I say that there's a lot of people that believe this is all symbolism. Oh, God's not gonna destroy the earth. Well, he said he's gonna make all things new, right? He's already put fire down on it. He's already, he's already got rid of all the seas, the oceans, and the water. We saw that. Is it too big for God? So remember what we talked about last week? The great white throne judgment? We talked about it being in a neutral space. Not in heaven, but a neutral space, because, because those that are unbelieving can't go to heaven. Can't enter. So there's a neutral space, right? Because the earth and all that's gonna be remade. That's what the writers are talking about. So there's a controversy over this, whether, whether it's really gonna be, but again, what I read, what I read you, Isaiah, out of Peter, and there's, there's many more. I didn't want to put all of them down here. Talks about a new heaven and a new earth. So I'm just gonna take that as, that's what it means. Because nothing's too hard for God anyway, right? So, think about that. The earth, the sky, and the outer spaces we know it are space is all gonna be new. And perfect. So he says, again, "New heaven, new earth." So the ancient Greek word translated new here, kain, means new in character or fresh. Again, doesn't mean recent or new in time. This isn't just the next heaven and the next earth. This is the better heaven and better earth, replacing the old, because the first has passed away. Again, I go back to the Garden of Eden. It was perfect, right? It's perfect. I think this new heaven and new earth, right, was what it was originally like. It's gonna be perfect, right? What are we gonna, what is he not gonna need? Rain. That's the way he originally created it, right? There was just a mist that fell on there, and things grew. It was perfect. So, uh, I don't think we're gonna need our umbrellas in heaven. Because he's got it. So, passed away. So, again, one writer said, "Though some disagreed, such as this writer, right, who argued passionately that the earth will never be destroyed." Again, we should understand that this is truly a new heaven and a new earth, not merely a remade heaven and earth, right? God doesn't, he doesn't make junk. He, he's gonna do it right the first time. So, uh, again, this is, uh, kind of debatable with some, but I just think like, God's gonna create, he's gonna make a new earth and a new heaven. It's gonna be perfect. Because we've messed this one up. Amen. Mankind has messed this one up enough. And we also know this, because Jesus said, "That heaven and earth shall pass away, but his words will live forever." So again, I don't think Jesus was talking in symbols. I think he meant what he said, just like the writers. So, that, that's my take on that, a new heaven and a new earth. Now, also in Isaiah sixty-five, God said prophetically that he will create a new heaven and a new earth, and the ancient Hebrew word, we looked at the Greek word, but now the Hebrew word, bar, means to create out of nothing. This is what I like. Create it out of nothing. What can, can you make something out of nothing? Right? It, it's like, remember the competition I told you with the atheist and God? The atheist said, "Well, I have a competition with God, and we'll create man," right? So God says, "Sure." So they got, they got to the meeting place, and the atheist reached down to grab the dirt, and he goes, "Uh-uh, uh-uh, get your own dirt." Right? We cannot create something out of nothing. Only God can do that. Amen. So that's a cool word. So that, there you go. So there's your Greek, your Hebrew, and what the writers think about this. Uh, again, he's not refashioning nothing. He gonna make it new. It's gonna be perfect. Alright. Now, some take this newness only as spiritual and moral change, which I put this in there because there, he said, "But there seems to be a general, a genuine physical transformation." Because he says, "There's no more sea." So there's your evidence again. That's at the end of this, right? He said, "I saw a new heaven and a new earth, and the former had passed away, and there was also no more sea." So no more water, right? Because we don't need it. I guess we don't need it. I, I hate that for the fishermen, though. Sorry, Brother Tinker. Well, maybe he'll let us fish in the river alive. I don't think we're gonna be too worried about that. But anyway.
When he levels all the mountains out, you know, he speaks of him, the mountains living in that, that could fill the sea. That could live along by that.
But, you know, and I, and I thought about this, talk, talk about the first part of this too, where he says, "Only a spiritual and moral change." Yeah, there's gonna be a spiritual moral, moral change on the earth, because only God's spirit's gonna dwell, and there'd be nothing else. So that's kind of a true statement, but again, I, I, I'm not going to debate over this. I just, again, that's what the word of God says, it's gonna be made new, and there's no more sea. So, Barnhouse wrote, he said, "In this chapter, we see that the, that the history of time is finished, and the history of eternity is about to begin." So what we talk about back in time, their history, right, his story is gonna be complete. And then eternity begins. That's a good thought. Hard to understand it. But it's a good thought. So, "The Holy City," it talks about New Jerusalem, right? I love this. Said, "This is the Jerusalem of hope, the Jerusalem above, and the place of our real citizenship." So notice what John, how he describes this. Again, uh, he says, "Then I, John," this is verse two, "saw the holy city, New Jerusalem," right? Again, is this the Jerusalem here? Nope. But what it symbolizes is Jerusalem was the city, right? Where what was built in the city? The temple. So, the Israelites, for years and years and years, God had dwelt in the tent, the tabernacle, and they pick it up and they move it. Well, now they built a temple, a permanent home, right? And until Christ came, God's presence only dwelt what in that temple? Where he'd come down once a year to meet with the high priest. But this, so Jerusalem is, this is kind of a symbol, right, of the new city, saying that it's what? It's God's city. And God's presence is gonna be there. So that's what, that's what we're gonna see in these, in these verses, right? So Galatians four, what I mentioned, uh, Galatians four tells us, "But the Jerusalem above is free, which is the mother of us all," right? So again, talking about is free. It's free of what? Free of sin, free of conflict. Nobody's fighting over it. No more crusades. None of that. Philippians three twenty says, "For our citizenship is in heaven, from which we also eagerly wait for the Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ." So, we're gonna be citizens of this new city of God. So that's kind of what I wanted to, to kind of go down there, when he talks about this holy city, the New Jerusalem. Now, the terms holy and new distinguish the city, right? I like this, because it is holy and new. It is different from any earthly city. The name Jerusalem gives it continuity with earth, especially with the place of our redemption, right? Because Jerusalem is what? It is the place where a lot happened, right? It is the place where they are still fighting over it today. Uh, I, I watched some, uh, I was watching some history about, uh, about that, talking about something else, but they brought the, the history of, of Israel. And, uh, to go back and kind of listen to it again, you know how all that came about, and why they're still fighting over it today? Because, uh, the, the Arabs feel like, you remember back that the British, uh, didn't keep their promise? And all the, all the people from, you know, from after the Holocaust, and all the, all the Israelites or the Jews, really, the Jewish people were, were coming back to the Holy Land. And thus, that conflict kind of started up again, and it's been going on ever since then. Even though they were declared a nation in nineteen forty-eight, they're still fighting over it. So, there's a lot of significance about Jerusalem. So that, I think that's why they give it this, like this writer said, the name Jerusalem gives it continuity, something we can, can remember, or something we can see and know what went on, but now it's been made new, and it's holy. Guzzi said, "Man has never known a community unmarred by sin." Is that a true statement? It's very true, isn't it? It's really, when you think about this, it's really, it's really something. Adam and Eve only knew a limited community, and community in a larger context only came along after the fall. Because who was there in the beginning? Just them two. They were community. And it was perfect, but then the fall came. So here in the New Jerusalem, we have something totally unique, a sinless, pure community of righteousness, a holy city. Where you can walk down any street you want to. You can go around any corner, go down any alley, wherever you want to go, you don't have to fear none of them. Can't say that about most places today, can you? Also too, there's not gonna be any night there, so you have to worry about that. Right? Uh, you know, I, I tell people, and again, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't go to New Orleans a lot. I've been some, and if I never go back, it's not gonna hurt my feelings. But I tell people that, that come, that work with us, and, "Oh, I wanna go to New Orleans." And I was like, "Hey, man, yeah, go down there, experience it. But I'm telling you this, you better be out of there before it gets dark." "What are you talking about?" I said, "It transforms." And those of you that have been there, you know what I'm talking about. Yeah. It's like Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde down there. But we don't have to worry about that here. And I think that's, I think that's, that's something to look forward to, a holy city that's, that's clean, pure, never had to worry about it. Then he talks about this. John describes the New Jerusalem coming down as a bride adorned, right? And this is the description he gives. So I love this. So, "Prepared as a bride adorned for her husband," John used the most striking, beautiful image he could think of. Think about this. The most beautiful thing a man will ever see is this bride coming down the aisle, ready to meet him. John said, "This is how beautiful the New Jerusalem will be." So think back on what John had to, his life experience to this point, what he had to roll off of. And he said this, that's what he knew to say, right? But it's the picture of it, not how beautiful it was. And then, "A loud voice from heaven." So, let, let's talk about this for just a minute. This is, this is verse three. "And I heard a loud voice from heaven saying, 'Behold, the tabernacle of God is with men, and he will dwell with them, and they shall be his people; and God himself will be with them and be their God.'" So, this is really, really neat. I, I think this part right here. So this announcement is about God, but not spoken by him. We're gonna talk about that, about God speaking here in a minute. This was not spoken by him. So the tabernacle of God, right, are his dwelling place. His immediate presence will now be on the new earth. And this is Dr. Jeremiah. So, he left us his what? His Holy Spirit, but now God's presence is gonna dwell over the whole thing. Ever thought about that? That's pretty cool, right? Yet God is everywhere now, but, but again, he's not what? Forcing himself on people, right? And we know, we know this, that probably, if there's not a believer with the Spirit of the Lord in some places, God's presence is probably not there. You know what I'm saying? Like strongly, where you feel it. Like, when we fellowship, or when we have worship, or when you're doing your quiet time, you're praying, and you feel that overwhelming presence of God, right? When you just, it's one of those, those things that happens, and, and you're crying, and you're weeping, or whatever, and you're just fellowshiping with other people, and you feel that, I think it's gonna be like that all the time. That's the presence I think about, right? Yeah, God is everywhere, but I'm just saying, his presence, right, with his believers, there's something different about that to me. So this is, this is the kind of presence I think of, right? So, Moses' tabernacle represented the dwelling place of God on earth. I talked about that a while ago. That was past the representation of dwelling place of God, right? That was the past. It's, this tabernacle of God is the reality of his presence. So it's not a place where he's, he may come, he may show, no, he's, he's there all the time. Spurgeon said, "This is the greatest glory of heaven and the ultimate restoration of what was lost in the fall." So we're going back to Adam and Eve. "I do not think the glory of Eden lay in its grassy walks, or in the boughs bending with luscious fruit; by its glory lay in this, that the Lord God walked in the garden in the cool of the day." Y'all remember that? "Here was Adam's highest privilege, that he had companionship with the Most High." That's pretty cool, ain't it? So he said, "It wasn't that it looked cool and everything was great. It was that God himself walked in the garden." Always amazed me that everything, everything is certain, tempted of it. Yes. Never, never, all of it. Yeah. Knowledge has a problem. We're not that good. They didn't, they didn't even know what, what, what pain was, what bad was, what anything was.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. And ever since then, we still messing up the good things of God. But it, it is, it's, it's neat to think about this. God, God was there actually walking. He said, "The disappearance of death, of sorrow, of crying, and pain represents a total reversal of the curses found in Genesis three." So think about that. So everything that's happened from that month till this point is done what? It's all gone. It's gone. Sin is gone. Remember, we talked about that the other day. When the devil was cast into the lake of fire, and everybody else was destroyed, that was the end of sin and evil. Done. So, when he talks about this, I think it's a great reminder, because I thought about that before, and I was like, why would they wait? Why would John wait to get down to this point? To tell us about this, that God's gonna wipe away all our tears, there'd be some more? It's just a great reminder of what we're gonna be led out of when we leave this earth. And when God establishes his new earth and new heaven, we're not even gonna think about that. So this is back to Brother Delmer's point. Alright? If there's no sorrow, if there's no pain, if there's no tears, then we're not gonna remember anything bad. That's what I think. Because if he makes all things new, then we're gonna have what? A new thought process. That's the way I think. Right? Because if, if you wipes away every tear, that means what? There's no, there's not gonna be any need to cry. We're not gonna have anything to cry over. If there's no sorrow, or there's no pain, we're not gonna remember the former things, right? Because he said, "The former things are what? Passed away." Well, I think that's our minds too. And I don't think we're gonna remember that stuff, because why? Because God knows, as human beings, we are the world's worst about holding on to the past and dwelling in it. Amen? So he's like, "We got to change that too. So when we get a glorified body, I think we're gonna get a glorified mind." That's my thought. Now, here's your question, Brother Delmer, or help you? Again, I don't, I don't know all the answers to that, but that's the way I think. Alright. So Spurgeon wrote this, about this. He said, "This is the greatest glory of heaven." Right? Again, and then, here we go. "And the ultimate restoration of what was lost in the fall." So what did they have in the fall? They had perfect fellowship with God, going back to Drew's point. They didn't know what wrong was, till they sinned. So they had perfect communion, perfect relationship with God. So again, that goes back to that restoration part. We're not even gonna know that stuff. So, that kind of makes sense, when you take it from this perspective, right? And you think about it, what Spurgeon said now. Again, the highest privilege Adam had was what? Companionship or relationship with God, a personal, the right there relationship with God, not separated, but there, in his presence. So that, that, that kind of helps me a little bit. W.A. Criswell said, "There are no stone cutters chiseling epitaphs in glory, no graves on the hillsides of heaven; there are no obituary columns in the newspaper, and no funeral processions over the streets of gold." Amen to that. So again, no need for what? Sorrow, crying, tears, none of that. Not gonna need it. That's why that, you think about that song, that song we sing, "Won't it be wonderful there, having no burdens to bear?" John Walbert said, "But the idea of tears in heaven should never be used as a tool of guilt manipulation on this earth." Now, listen to this. "There is no, there is no just ground for imagining from this text that the saints will shed tears in heaven concerning the failures of their former life on earth. The emphasis here is on the comfort of God, not on the remorse of the saints." That's a good statement too, right? In other words, when we stand before Christ, right, I don't think Christ is gonna give us a guilt trip. And we're gonna have to go through heaven saying, "Boy, I wish I'd done that. I wish I wouldn't have done it." I, I think all that's gone, right? I think we understand that. God has forgiven us, and he wiped that slate clean, right? So we don't have to walk around heaven thinking, "Well, boy, I wish I wouldn't have done this, I wish I would've..." Again, we shouldn't have that mind, and we shouldn't think about that, and it shouldn't give us any kind of guilt. And while we're here on this earth, we need what? To be reminded that every once in a while, right? We shouldn't do this, we shouldn't do that, or we need to do this, and we need to do that. But again, when we get to heaven, we're not gonna worry about that stuff. The emphasis here is on the comfort of God, not the remorse of the saints. Now, this is something I found too, as we go down through here, right? Again, this is verse five. So, we just saw up here that a voice come from heaven. Now, we get into verse five, he said, "Then he who sat on the throne said," so God speaks and he's speaking, "Behold, I make all things new," right? So, hold on to that. So, "Behold, I," is the first clear instance of God speaking directly since Revelation one eight. And his message is directed to who? The whole world, everybody that's there now, all the believers. He said, "I make all things new," is the climax of Revelation. So here we go, right? We've seen what? We've seen the introduction that John got, said, "You're gonna write these things." He wrote the letters to the churches. We've seen what? We've seen all the seals, we've seen the martyrs, we've seen all these things, the destruction of the earth. It's all led up to what? Our whole life existence is leading up to what? God returning, his son returning, and God making all things new, and an eternity with him. So, and all things put right. So this is the climax of this book, God has said. "And he said, 'Write, for these words are true and faithful.'" Now, I love this right here. He said, "Guzzi said, 'John was probably so astounded by these words that he forgot to write, and must be told to do so.'" Have you ever thought about that? I had to put that in there, because I thought that was funny when I was reading the commentary. So look, look at five. Uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, look at the end of five. "And he said to me, 'Write, for these words are faithful and true.'" Now, I don't know if that's what it means, but I just thought that was so funny, when Guzzi said, "John was maybe so astounded that he forgot to write." How astounded was John? I think John was overwhelmed with all these things he had to think of, to write, to remember to write, rather, and then he saw and he experienced. And so I think it was overwhelming to him. But I thought that was funny that Gusick wrote that. "Write, for these words are true and faithful," right? I think maybe God was putting the emphasis on it too. John, you need to catch this. What I'm fixing to tell you, you need to write it down, right? Because when I make a promise, I keep a promise. These words are true and faithful. And we know that. So God says, "It is done." Now, God's eternal purpose in Jesus is now accomplished. This is what the son died for, that everyone would believe, that whoever would believe what can have everlasting life. We can have fellowship with him forever. So I thought about this. Jesus said, "It's finished," when he was on the cross. It is finished, right? And he died to pay for the sin of the world. He said, "It's finished." God here in Revelation says, "It's done." And he has now destroyed sin forever. And now a life free of sin is every believer's to enjoy for eternity in his new world, right? He, he's putting an end to all things. So Christ came and said, "It's finished," right? He didn't say, "It's done," he said, "It's finished." I've made the way for people to have life eternal with the Father. But you gotta accept what I've done and believe in me. So this is now the climax of all of that, when God has promised us eternal life, a new heaven, a new earth, a new home, right? And now, when we get to this point, God says, "It's done. It's done." Now we just gonna worship through eternity and live in a sin-free, care-free world. There's never gonna be anything bad. Don't have to worry, be no anxiety, right? Won't be depressed. You won't get depressed in heaven, trust me. Don't have to worry about anything. Because God said, "It's done now." Gusick says also about this, and he tells them, the voice does, "God says, 'I will give of the fountain of the water of life freely to him who thirsteth.'" I like this. Said, "Drinking and thirst are common pictures of God's supply and man's spiritual need," right? Drinking is an action, but an action of receiving like faith. It is doing something, but it is not a merit-earning work in itself, right? So in other words, we're not, we're not doing it to earn anything is what he's saying. God is offering the water of life freely, just like he offers salvation, right? He's offered it freely, whosoever, whoever, right? And God said he wants no one to perish. So I think it's just a great reminder, "I will give of the fountain of the water of life freely to him who thirsteth." And I got to thinking to myself, are we gonna be thirsty in heaven? I don't know. But we got something to drink if we are. Freely give it, right? And I thought about Adam and Eve again. They could eat of the tree of life. Y'all remember that? They just couldn't eat of the tree of the good and knowledge and evil. They could eat of the tree of life. When they ate of the tree of life, they did what? They lived, they could live forever. But sin caused them what? For that fellowship to be broken. And they lost that. But now God gives what? The water of life freely. Right?
That's probably correct what I said, I said they had all of it. I don't think they were on God's water.
No, no, no.
They'd be like God.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and, and that's why Satan's trapped for him. But God knew, right? And again, it's like, well, why didn't God even put that tree in there? Because God, he, he requires obedience, right? He requires obedience. He wants obedience. He wants us to obey him. He wants us to love him.
Stop and use that glorified brain for two seconds. I realize that God ain't gonna give them food, it's gonna be his own undoing.
Yeah. I just think it's like, what a great reminder, like all this going back to the garden again. You know, talking about the fall and now it's done, everything's made new.
You know, Isaiah forty-four three says, "I will pour water on him to his thirst, and floods on the dry ground."
Yeah.
And blessings on their off.
Yeah, and that, and it's beautiful, the picture of water, because it's used so much in the Bible, right? Because one of our bodies mostly made of water. Water, water's the key to life, when you think about it, right? I'm talking about this whole fleshly body. We gotta have water, we gotta stay hydrated, right? We gotta have water to do all kinds of things. So it's, it's a central item that's, that's necessary. But I think here God is saying, "I give you whatever you need. You never gonna, you're not gonna be thirsty. And if you are, I'll give you some, right? But you're not gonna need anything as Christians." But what a great reminder to say, right? "I will give of the water of life freely to him who thirsteth." But I don't think we're gonna be that thirsty in heaven.
So your body is made up of a lot of water.
Oh, absolutely.
Flesh.
Like.
But now spiritual body is.
I'm trying to remember what, how much? I don't remember the percentage. Somebody else that took anatomy probably remembers more than I did. But your body, it's, it's a lot of it. A great percentage of it's made of. Spurgeon says, "What does a thirsty man do to get rid of his thirst? He drinks. Perhaps there's no better representation of faith in all the word of God than that. To drink is to receive, to take in the refreshing draught, and that is, and that is all. A man's face may be unwashed, but yet he can drink. He may be very, a, a very unworthy character, but yet a draught of water will remove his thirst. Drinking is such a remarkable, remarkably easy thing, it is even more simple than eating." You ever thought about that? Right? You don't have to go take a shower to go get a drink of water. That's what he's trying to say. I know you can be hot out working and you go get your drink of water and it does what? It refreshes you. But I love the picture of that. Says such a remarkably easy thing to ju, to take a drink, right? Our body requires it. So I love that, kinda that reference to what, what he's saying here. If you're thirsty, you drink.
He says, uh, you know, man can't live on bread and wine.
Right?
He said, "And that water, the man, water can symbolize the Holy Spirit."
Oh, absolutely. Right? I mean, that's why his word's called the bread of life, right? We have to have it. Uh, that's why, that's why fasting, uh, has been taken out of context so many times by people, right? It's not about see how long you can go without eating and look at what I've done. It's about, it's about taking that just for a time and saying, "I'm gonna give this up. And when I'm, when I'm hungry, I'm gonna go get in the word of God. I'm gonna let it nourish me," right? Yeah, your body's eventually, you're gonna have to eat, right? That's the way we're created. But it's the picture of laying that aside for a while and doing nothing but focusing on God. And that's why it's important, right? Uh, it, it's an important part of worship, you know? And there's all kinds of things you can do, but, but sometimes fasting's taken out of context that, "Look at what I've done. I fasted for a week." Okay, well, what did you do during that time? Right? Did you think about eating the whole time? Right? You know, was you counting down the minutes? Again, don't do it for the wrong reason. Fasting is something that, and the Bible talks about it, right? So gotta have water, you gotta have food, but... I love that. Alright.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent?
Your body, your body is sixty percent.
I knew it was a bit, I knew it was over half. Been a while since I did that. "Every believer who has overcome the world by faith will inherit all seven benefits promised in Revelation two and three." This is interesting. This is Dr. Jeremiah's. So I went back and I found all seven of them. I'm, I'm gonna share them with you. When he wrote the letter to the seven churches, if you remember at the end of each one of those letters, right? He wrote something, right? He also said, "He who hasn't yet let him hear." But he also said, "To he who overcomes, I will give." Alright? So this is what he's gonna give. Now think about this. This is what Dr. Jeremiah wrote, and I found this interesting, right? Number one, "I will give them to eat from the tree of life, which is in the paradise of God." Number two, right? "We will not be hurt, to not be hurt by the second death." Right? That's a promise to all Christians, right? We only gonna die once. We're not dying twice. "To eat some of the hidden manna and to receive a white stone with a new name written on it." Remember we talked about that, it's been a while, alright? "To have power over the nations." Remember we talked about that? He said we would judge the nations, or judge angels and all that, we talked about? Again, I don't, I don't understand all of that, but power over the nations. I think that's when we helped him rule, right? "To be clothed in white garments. To be made a pillar in the temple of God with God's name and the name of God's city and Christ's new name written on them or written on us. And to sit with Jesus on his throne." That's what, you go back and read chapter two and three, you will see every one of these at the, at the conclusion of every letter to the churches. This was his promise. So Dr. Jeremiah said, "Every believer who has overcome the world by faith will inherit all seven of these benefits." Right? Why wouldn't? We're gonna inherit everything in heaven, right? So that's what he's talking about. These are, these are promises. He's saying not to just these people, but to all, to all God's people that are faithful. Then he comes down to this part. We're talking about all this good stuff, but then God has a little reminder here. "But the cowardly, unbelieving, abominable have their part, excuse me, have their part in the lake which burns with fire and brimstone." Now we've already known this, so I found this interesting. He said, "Those who reject Jesus and make themselves apostate are specifically prohibited from entering the new Jerusalem." But we already know that, so why did he say this? And I thought this was kinda interesting. "Here is the stark contrast between those who will be cast into the lake of fire and those who have tasted the water of life." It's a reminder. It, it's God himself reminding John to remind whoever reads this book and hears these words. Again, here at the very end, after all this stuff has gone on, after all this time has elapsed during this time, God's still saying, I'm gonna tell you one more time, right? "Those who reject my Son are going to the lake of fire." It's like God's grace and mercy just showing up through the, even in the very end of this book. "Although several types of sin," this is Dr. Jeremiah, "are listed, those who commit them are lumped into one group by the single word." What was that word? "But the cowardly, the unbelieving." Again, doesn't matter what sins they all list, they're all grouped into one, right? Because these are people that have rejected Jesus Christ. So the contrast in outcomes for both groups is laid out in no uncertain terms, right? God doesn't mince words when he says this, right? He said, "Believe in my Son, you can live in heaven. You don't believe in my Son, you reject him, you're going to the lake of fire." It's very clear. Failure to respond leads to an unthinkable eternity. And that's the message God's trying to get out. Their inheritance is the second death. And this was written by Dr. Jeremiah. So it's real simple. It's really simple, right? It, it's, all this, all this chaos in the world, I think overshadows sometimes the simplicity of God's word. And I said this the other day. You got, I mean, you got all these factions and groups and all this stuff we talk about all the time, right? We talk about Democrats, we talk about Republicans, we talk about, uh, you know, the liberals, we talk about the, the socialist or the communist or the fascist or all these things. It comes down to two things. There are those who believe in God and his son and those who are following the devil. Period, right? Whether it was the Philistines or the Jebusites or the, anything with an "i" on the end of it that used to fight against God's people. It come down to two things. And it's like that, that preacher said that, oh, never will forget it. And it's been said many times since then. It all comes down in the end, what did you do with Jesus Christ? Did you trust him or did you reject him? So I think sometimes that it, it, I think sometimes it gets so covered up with all the, that we point fingers, right? You know? Oh, that, yeah, this and that, you know? And, and we joke and we pick about things, right? You know, especially when it comes to sports, right? You know, well, you must be lost if you followed that team on TV. I've heard that before too, you know? Uh, you know, just that picking and playing about things, you know? But it, it's true. It comes down to two things in the end. And I think it's the reminder that God gives us. And he's reminding again, here, but here in the end, in the good stuff, he reminds us of the bad stuff as well, right? Because he says in the very end of it, look back at verse eight as we finish. "They shall have their part in the lake which burns with fire and brimstone, which is the second death." And so I don't think it's no mistake that John wrote that there. I think it's just another great reminder of what God is trying to tell us. It's just my opinion, but it's like, here again, right? He's trying to call, trying to sell, trying to wake up people. Any comments? Questions?
I'm gonna ask you a question.
Shoot.
Since we down to that point right there, uh, to me blaspheme in the spirit, blaspheme in the Holy Spirit. That, the Holy Spirit is pointing you to Jesus, telling you, "You need your sins to give. You need a Savior to enter the kingdom. You gotta go through the Son to get the gospel." But when you blaspheme that Spirit, you're rejecting the Lord, Jesus Christ. Now let me ask you something. Do you think that every human being alive is born into this world? Do you think that sometime in their life that the Holy Spirit lives in them?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I know there's people that don't believe it, but I believe it. And here's why I believe, because it's all created by God.
I do too, I believe that too. It would be fair if he didn't do it. He uses everybody in church.
It, it's like this. Uh, we, we had this discussion here a while back. And I told this guy this, again, you can talk about religions and how you interpret things and all that. I said, "Let's talk about morals, right?" Most of us know, e, even if we weren't Satan, right? Boy, we were young, we knew what right and wrong was, right? Now, it's been skewed a lot since then because it's not taught a lot in homes like it's, like it used to be, right? But we knew, right? We knew what disobedience brought. Uh, we knew what, uh, what it meant you didn't use God's name in vain. And that, I'm not talking about discussing, I'm talking, there's a lot of things you don't do with God's name, right? And, and we knew that it was wrong to kill and things like that, it's morals. And a lot of people have moral values. Now, now some don't. And so they try to look at that and say, "Well, that culture, they don't know anybody." I disagree. I think they do. I think inherently everyone knows, right? It's wrong to take another person's life. And I'd be hard pressed for anybody to change my mind with that, right? I mean, I know people were brought up in different environments and, and things like that, but I think it's inherent that they know right and wrong, right? To steal or something like that. And, and so people say, "Well, they're just a product of their environment." Yeah, that, that may be true, but still, right? When Adam and Eve ate of the tree, they went and hid from God. They knew they had done wrong, right then, they knew what wrong was. And that's why God was walking and he's like, "Where are y'all?", like he didn't know what to do, right? He wanted to know what, 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 what they gonna do. What's their excuse? But you already knew that. And from that point, right? God shed the first blood, the first sacrifice was made for man, because they had to be covered in animal skin. The second time blood was shed was between Cain and Abel. And he knew it was wrong. Jealousy. So all of that stuff I'm saying, right? He knew better, but man, why, we let, we let what? We let the world get a hold of, we let Satan try to guide us down things and we let, uh, we let, you know, whatever take over sometimes. And then that may not be a great example, but I just think, I believe that God speaks to every man. And I go back to Romans, chapter one, when Paul wrote it. And he talks about all those things. And he says, "They know and they're without excuse." So I don't think people are gonna stand at judgment and say, "But God, I lived in the..." So I don't think people are gonna stand at judgment and say, "But God, I lived in the furthest reaches of the Congo and I never heard the gospel." He gonna say, "Yeah, I tried to speak to you." Remember that? That's just my belief. That's my belief. Now, there's a lot of people believe like I do. So again, that's just my opinion. But that's just the way I believe. Yeah, I think he talks to every man. I think there's a call on every person's life at one time or another. That's just my opinion. Anybody else? Like, "We're not touching that." No, I, I mean, really, that's just, that's just the way I believe after reading God's word. Anybody else? All right, nope, we're not touching that with a ten-foot pole.
Well, you know one thing you were talking about, you remember nothing, you know?
Yeah.
It's like you were looking for all the thorns and paper spades.
Yeah. I mean, do you, to me, do you really think that, that the word of God says what? Jesus said, "When the gospel is preached to all the nations." And I think that encompasses the whole world, so they can't say they didn't hear. That's my opinion. That's why I say that. It's going out to all nations. Anybody else?